I'm stuck on the Atlantic.
Yes.
I'm a Jewish Jew, I'm a Christian, I'm a Muslim.
Yeah, I'm a Jew.
Where's Skip? Skip, Skip, the famous person, Skip!
Buddy? You're my guy, buddy.
They're one of them outside.
Hello, hey!
You're the other one. Babe, you guys, you're safe now.
Fuck it.
Alright, um, our leader is gonna come in very soon. And, uh, when he comes in, we're gonna pray the national anthem. And we expect us to... Wait. Hello? I don't like this microphone, but I have connected. Alright, um... Alright, so, well, our leader was brought into here this afternoon. And we expect that when he comes in, we're gonna stand up and take the national anthem from there. So while we're waiting, let's give our famous person a word. And I'll try to go on the air, I want to broadcast live. But unfortunately, I'm having a little problem here, but I know I'm gonna beat it, no matter what it does. This is with Yopiafra USA too. We never give up, we give try. This is a wartime radio, so don't really worry about it. It's not a war. Alright, so let's wait for our leader to come out.
Holy, holy, holy! Nantikano! 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 Amadike! Nantikano! 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 Amadike! Ibiobi! One family! 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 Ibiobi! Holy, holy, holy! Nantikano! Is a man a savior? Holy, holy, holy! Holy, holy! Nantikano! Is a man a savior? Holy, holy! Holy, holy! Nantikano! Is a man a savior?
Let's sit down.
Nantikano! 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 Amadike! Amadike be a savior! Nantikano! Nantikano! Amadike! Nantikano! 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 Amadike!
Ibiobi!
One family!
Ibiobi!
One family!
Ibiobi!
One family!
One family!
Ibiobi!
I thank all of you here gathered today. I am pleased to be in New York City. And particularly impressed with the quality of people that I'm seeing here today. I am humbled. Open my heart and see that you are. Come, Rosalind, come. He was with me in Israel. I can tell you that he is one of us. No, because we're by each other. I'm very happy to see all of you, very happy to see all of you. And also Scott Berry is here as well, is that correct? Good to see you. Good to see a lot of you here. I believe we are alive, is that correct?
Yes.
We must proceed without further hesitation. Because today, we will preach this gospel here in New York. It's so good to the guy that passes here by. Here, and it says that everything he did would be supposed to be here in New York. And I'm sure the whole world is listening, is that correct?
Hundred percent.
So also, it's my deputy teacher, who will ensure that this very program goes out to the ends of this very earth. Because after today, things will no longer be said in my show. We must proceed, um, I'm sure you have a program. We will respect and adhere to our program here today. I believe that we have an emcee, is that correct? Who will do the introduction of the principal servants, if I may hand over the microphone to the master of ceremony today. Is it it, oh my goodness? No, actually, no. Okay, I'm ready. Thank you very much. Thank you, Marzi. Marzi. I will ask you all to bear, okay, for my, okay, never. I don't even know where to start. I'm so happy we are all here, gathered here for this celebration. We have to follow the protocol to the introduction of the principal servants in New York and New Jersey. Uh-huh. Um, what I would do is that I'll hand you over to the coordinator, the state of New York. He will introduce the rest of the principal officers. My name is Young, because sometimes it's easy to deal with one person, then they take it over. So Marzi, please introduce members of, this is, let me introduce him, he is Marzi Ezegusli, the coordinator, the state coordinator of New York. Ibiobi!
One family!
Ibiobi!
One family!
You're welcome to New York. Our leader is another great opportunity to have you in our midst. I remember last time you came. Last time, we hosted you here, on your way back, the zoo arrested you. So this is another opportunity to have you in our midst, and we appreciate your call. You're welcome. I believe you.
One family!
I want to use this opportunity to appreciate, uh, you know, the, how would I put it? The strong bones behind me, you know, the people that made this event to be as you're seeing it today. I am the state coordinator of New York, Ezegusli David is my name. But I have other guys that work with me. My deputy is here, Marzum Marike. And the New Jersey, that is not up to, how many months? New Jersey is how many months?
Two months.
Two months, Marze. And we just, oh, yeah, the New Jersey state coordinator. And you guys appreciate it. The New Jersey is just three months old. Three months! But they're doing great things. Have you seen it? Ibiobi!
One family!
Ibiobi!
One family!
Well, you're welcome. We appreciate your coming. Um, well, I can say that Marzum Ezegusli has said, I mean, why we're here today. And, um, I hope we are, everyone is glad to be here to see our boy endu. So I'll hand over the microphone to Marzum Ezegusli. Our Yopiafra. I want to appreciate Hichi Ezogun, he's a coordinator from Boston, Massachusetts. So we say hi to him. Ibiobi!
One family!
Ibiobi!
One family!
Be your welcome.
Thank you for being here with us.
And God bless you. If you're coordinator here, can you guys, it's a work. Alright. I'll start now. I'm sorry. Uh, Pastor Thomas, can you please come and say hi to our people? And also Marzum Queens. This is a Saginaw coordinator, Pastor Thomas Kratos. All hail Yopiafra!
All hail Yopiafra!
We welcome all of you in the name of Yahweheshua.
Thank you.
Ibiobi!
One family!
Ibiobi!
One family!
I'm really glad to be alive and to be here today. Because I think it's a great day, if not for you, for me. Because when I got into this movement, our leader was in the prison. So I imagine, how can I see him? And seeing him today, I think, which I'll leave longer.
Thank you, thank you. Bronze coordinator, Marzum Kuwembe, if you're not here, the deputy come, or when I'm here, you come. Marzum Bina, where's Kuwembe? Then Kuwembe, you come here and say hi to our people. That's the bronze deputy coordinator. Can you put your hands together for him?
Ibiobi! One family!
Ibiobi!
One family!
One family!
Ibiobi!
We are really happy. Uh, Marzum, may God continue to bless you and guide you and protect you. Um, this is, uh, Ibiobi Bronze Chapter. Of Bronze, uh, my name is Kuwembe Valentine, I'm from Oga. And I go to Oga government area. Uncle Brobes, they are from LA. Thank you. All hail Yopiafra. I will keep the microphone back with I, because, can you guys forgive me? Because it's not that I forget my other coordinators, I just introduce the states, forgetting those that are working with me. They will. See, I confirmed what I was saying. All in the mind of our mighty men. So I'm not the only one. Marzum, we have to hand over the microphone for you to open the hall, pray for us. Uh, open prayer, and so we ask you for this time. Ibiobi!
One family!
May we remain standing, please, because we need to pray. The standing here in front of me is an ordained man of God. I will defer to him and I ask him to pray beside me, please, he come for me. To poor Kiké Yama. The God of Yopiafra. The God of Israel. The God of Abraham, our great grandfather. The God of Jacob. Your children have gathered from the east, from the west, from the north and south of this country. And they have come to hear your statement whom you have anointed and given to us. This is our Lord's doing, it is marvelous in our eyes. We never had a freedom fighting like this. And that's why many don't understand. They call him names, they have gone to kill him, today by your super sonic power, you preserved him for us. So that the enemies in our lands shall be destroyed. In the name of Hisua and Hisiah. They have gathered all the Islamic on killing on second side. on killing all second side faiths. To fill our lands, to pollute it, they rape the women, they do all kinds of harm to your own children. And I know from heaven right now, you are hearing us. And you are watching us from the dead heaven. And I know you have never, and you will never let us die. You have never said to anyone and disappointed that person. And we are glad and privileged to have your servant. The prophet of Beaufort, Martinande Kano, who humbled himself to take the call to guard serve the whole of the children of Israel that live in Beaufort Land. Even so, we commit everything we are going to do today. We want you to be the first and the last. We want you to be the leader. We know your hands are on this man. And we know you will never fear him. You've never feared anyone. And you are not going to fear him. You are not going to fear I P O B. We are going to win this war. All our enemies shall be confounded. They shall be destroyed. In the name of Yesu Hamashiach. We ask you, Lord, to reign, lift your wisdom. Your knowledge be a doubt on your servant as he ministers. Speak through him, minister to your people. Your people are stubborn, they don't listen, they don't hear us. The Lord as he ministers today, take control of this town as ever before. A whole person and speak to us. Our women are listening. Our children are gathering together. Lord, they are waiting for you. We know you are going to fight this battle for us. So that the enemies, we know, for the friends, for the last time, they will never try Beaufort again. They will never try the children of Israel. They will know that we have a covenant, that no other person has. And we, you are going to prove it. We have done it in Beaufort three places, three times or more. When the son that represents Israel appeared on Beaufort land. Father, the way of Wanda get Israel. You put it on this hand. Speak to us. The act of the covenant of Israel is resting on his shoulders. And give him over to you for the personal protection. In the name of Yesu Hamashiach.
He said.
Do it and have the glory. As I commit everything we are going to do here, any enemy who disguise himself or his shame and is here, confound them, in the name of Yesu Hamashiach. Maybe they will go back the way they care. They frustrate. Father, thank you for hearing us. In the name of Yesu Hamashiach, Jesus, without a doubt, pray. I P O B.
One family.
Guys, you may stand. Oh, national anthem. All hail Beaufort.
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 You may all be seated. All right, um. If you want to take a picture, they told you before, sit on your seat, you can do it from there, focus on there. We have official photographer here, if you don't get enough, a lot of things should do. And, uh, make sure that you get as many pictures as you want. We all want to take pictures too, me too. Everybody wants to. All right, the next in program is says presentation of colonos. Your leader. I put in Oji, ah, Oji. Uh huh. I got one of these, I watch. You know, uh, sorry, we have to speak it in our own dialect, one of the dialects. Beaufort language is a Igbo language. Igbo, Igbo is a language in Beaufort and, uh, watching the player, unfortunately, they, they made it look like we are separate. No, we are the same people, just have a speaking different dialect. And this thing that they bring in there, they call it colonos. It doesn't speak English, doesn't speak African English, speaks Igbo language. That's the only thing they understand. Uh, so, Mazi. And you will talk Oji. I go and I'm walking, I go Oji, I go, I go near. Then say. Oh, okay, all right, uh, let's see. Um, I am there, I'm going to buy Elsa there, but. Buy Elsa. I have a Oji. I'm going to buy Elsa, okay, I'm going to number now here. Okay. Uh, I'm going to go some, I'm going to answer, I'm, I is leave. All right, um. Oh, what do you want, you want state? Oh, hey, I, okay, you know, the rule. Yeah, I'm going to soon. I am here, I'm there, I'm soon. All right, uh. All right, I'm going to, I'm going to, um. Idoma, do we have any person from Idoma? Is John? Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to, okay, I'm going to. I'm going to, maybe, maybe. Okay. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna. Because, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to see now here, his royal. His royal highness. Uh, Ezri. Parista. Shima. Reago. Can you take a step now, please? Oh, okay. Oh, my, the member of, um, World People Congress, uh? Oh, wait up. Anybody from World People Congress that is present in class? I can give you some colonos. I'm going to, I have a little person. I am going to, I want to village, I want to chat. I want to see Georgia, give me the money, get, I'm getting for a good year now. I said, guys, you get it, you get it, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to. It's something you, I'm going to, I'm going to. So I'm going to, I'm going to, I am, I am going to. I am, I am going to. Okay, I have the, I have the. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to state. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to. Uh, I'm gonna. I'm going to, I'm going to. Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 So I'm going to, I'm going to. Um. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to. And Rosyma, Orun, Uke. Abia. Okay, Abia State. I'm going to state. Uh huh, I think I will give you a photo. I'm going to, I'm going to. Oh, okay. Okay, what are you, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. All right, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to. All right, Ma of the, Ma see, now you're going to read. I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 Are you without microphone? All hail Beaufort. Please, I'm going to. I'm going to, 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 I'm going to. Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 Um, I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to.
He said.
All the man down, oh, I go. I'm going to, I'm going to. Uh huh. All hail Beaufort.
All hail Beaufort.
All hail Beaufort.
All hail Beaufort.
I go, I'm going to.
Yes.
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 I'm going to, I'm going to. Um. I'm going to. I'm going to. I'm going to, I'm going to.
Yes.
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 I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 I'm going to, I'm going to.
Yes.
I'm going to, I'm going to. 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 Uh huh, Tukukikia, I'm going to, I'm going to.
He said.
All right. All right. All right, um, we're recording, recording session of Beaufort groups. The vets. There was so many guys here, Hichi. All right, uh, thank you, the battery was running out. Okay, um, let me add something, our elders, veterans, they, they, you know, those who did what I did in the seventies. The veterans, could you please say, make yourself known? If the, the vets, just, you don't understand, of course, you, right? Oh, okay. That's good. Like, I said, I said something, I said the way I did, I was a vet too, I was in the war. Fall in the war, I understand. Yes, I mean, I enjoyed it differently, but today I'm still fighting the war anyway. By this time, not with the physical, uh, gun, but the microphone trying to do what I can do, because our leader taught us a new way of doing the same thing that we did before. And very effective, of course. In those days when I had to fight, I don't know why most of us came out. I don't have any friends that I lost through the war. And, uh, but today, we are still doing the same thing, they have not left us alone, nothing has changed. Some people were saying that we went to that war, uh, Tukuk did this, Tukuk did that, and there, you had no choice. If you were there, you would fight. Then I enjoyed it. I was quite young, gave me opportunity to live home. At least my parents wouldn't tell me what to do, I remember when I, when I first came to my father to tell my father I was going to join the army. I just said, my father, I told him I wanted to be in the army. He didn't say anything, he just walked away. And my mother said, you know, you're going to, you're not going to be in the army. My father didn't even respond, kept going. Mama said, you know, you shouldn't, I will, Peter is not going to be in the army. Oh, you have army, not going to be in the army. I'm going to, I'm going to. I was already, he, he ruled the army. So it was fun, but today we are doing the same thing, our leader has taught us a different way. It is happening to all of us. I'm going to, see what is going. See what is going on in our home. Right now, we look at ourselves as people who don't have a home. Oh, well, eh, 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 when they talk of this, they say, eh, it doesn't concern them. Okay. It does not concern you, but one day, because it's getting to that. It's getting to a point where you won't even know where your family is. You are here now because they are calling you on the phone, you are talking to them. Always, especially, you won't even know where they are, you will not be a happy person. No matter what you eat in this place, you will not feel good. So, veterans, you are welcome, we thank you, all of you. And all our elders also, we are welcome, you. Let's give ourselves a hand of applause. Alright, eh, what else we have on the agenda now? It says inauguration of the IPOB Women's Week. One, Agapri Jess. One, Buna. Are you here? Could you please come forward and take the mic, you want to speak to your women?
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
IPOB.
One family.
First of all, I thank God for good life. My husband is here, he brought me here today. And eh, I thank God for everything that has happened in my life. And also, my first honesty, I drag all of them here. My name is Bridget. I'm a registered nurse coordinator on the children's group. I'm married to Tony, who cares me. Eh, he is from Hungary, I'm from Aljou.
And my husband is from Hungary.
Eh, both myself and my husband, philanthropy is not a stranger to us. Because we have been blessed by the Almighty God so much that we have decided to use most of our income to help people at home. My husband has educated two doctors whom we don't even know. We haven't seen them before. Only that we received a phone call that their father died on a road traffic accident while coming back. And they are seven in the family. So, when my husband received the call, he started training one. And the second one ran to the school and called my husband and said he wants to go to school too. And he decided to train them. On my own side, I can't even count them anymore because most of them I hide it from him. So that he doesn't know. And eh, we spent a lot trying to see what we can do. But no matter what we do, none of them is stable. We still go back to keep on helping and keep on helping, but it does, it's not yielding anything. When I heard of eh, what about our leader, even before I heard about him, I was praying and I said, "The only person that will save the problem in our land is God Almighty." Then eventually, I heard about him and what he was saying, and I said, "Here is the man." Then, when eventually, I heard that eh, the python man came to his house, I was depressed because I thought that he was dead. Then, from there, I heard about all the news that we are massacred and severed because that was where I was brought up. I became depressed. I did not know what to do, I was confused. Until the day I was told, my girlfriend forwarded it to my phone about his appearance in Israel. That day, my heart was revived. And I have never stopped hearing and listening to IPOB. The radio, eh, eh, eh. Since then. I, I did not know, I did not plan that I would, I'm the person that will become called to speak about this today. But I know how much I feel about what was going on. So, when we went to Atlanta for the third year, eventually, I was spotted by our leader. So, our leader, whatever you did for me that day and prayed for me, I want you to do the same thing to my fellow women. Because after your prayer, my life was completely changed. When I came back on the first of June, because when I was given this position, I said, "I don't know what to do, I don't know what to do." Then it was Father Augustine that we met at Atlanta. Here it is. He called me and said, "You know where you will start? Go and let our leader pray for you." And after he prayed that prayer, there was a change. And ever since then, when I came back, I haven't stopped calling Father Augustine. Each time, I will call him on the phone and I say to him, "Here is what I want to do, what you want us to do." And he has been so supportive and helpful, eh, eh, together with other priests that I have contacted. So, I decided that whatever Ohamadika did for me, whatever he saw in me is also in all you women here. So, Father, please, I would like you to come out with me. We want to dance. Because Ohamadika is going to bless everybody, including those who are not here. Please, all women, can you stand and come, please? So that eh, anybody that they were able to talk to that accepts this eh, family so that we can be integrated in the family. So, I am encouraging all of you to be part of this family because God will bless you. You never know what you are missing if you are not part of the family. So, forget all about all the scandals that have been laid against IPOB, they are not true. And any of them that is true is just twisted. So, we want to save our country. It's very, very important. And all of you know what women can do. So, after this, we are going to make, please, do not leave, I need eh, names, names of government, please. Okay, thank you.
Wait, wait, wait. Wait, please. IPOB.
One family.
Our mothers are here today. And I want to say, Tuco Tika Biaman, for his guidance and his mercy upon our mothers who are here today, a representation of the fighting spirit that we are born with. Because everything that we possess in terms of our determination, our consistency, our quest for justice, we receive from our mothers. Our moral compass we got from our fathers. The same way that our mothers rose up in nineteen twenty-nine, the same way they rose up in nineteen forty-seven is how they have risen up today in this very land of America. Therefore, we ask the Yehudim to bless and to sustain them, to bring the same nurturing spirit, the same guidance, the same love and affection that they have for us, their children, to see IPOB as their child and for them to nurture it accordingly. We pray for your mercy to be upon them. Because I said it before we started, that only two things are missing in this restoration effort. The involvement of our women and also those who live in the United States of America. Here today in New York, both of those things are happening, which is a very strong indication that Piafra is indeed very, very close. I charge you, Yehudim, because we know how we pray. We know our hearts because nothing is hidden before thee. To infuse your spirit of togetherness and sisterhood into this very pillar of IPOB that we are nurturing today here in New York, that you may bless them and guide them exceedingly. That you may give them wisdom and understanding. That you may give them strength and fortitude to balance their affairs of this very noble possession until Piafra is restored and beyond. In the name of Tuco Tika Biaman, I will pray. Alright, alright, our mothers, they have done it so well and I trust that anything they get involved in, it's time to go, the time to move. Things will be moved. Alright, eh, next on the program, we have eh, our Reverend Father Austin. Could you please come here, come out here, sir, and address us? Few minutes and tell us eh, a few things, three words of encouragement. Alright, yeah. All happy, eh, eh. IPOB. IPOB. Onyandu. You are most welcome.
My name is Reverend Father Augustine Adinunagwa. Father Adinunagwa is from Emili Province, Omambara. Piafra Land. Eh. Onyandu, I hope you don't mind, let me speak to our people. One issue. Eh, I was making surveys of calls just for this occasion, in New Jersey and New York. And eh, I got surveys of questions. Each time, I would refer the person to come here and ask our Onyandu for the answer. But one came to me that I could not refer to him. And this one was, one of my good friends asked me, "Father, why are you in IPOB?" Very serious. And I was like, "Why do you ask?" Because as far as I know, IPOB means dependent people of Piafra. My apologies. The indigenous people of Piafra. And I said, "If I'm sixty percent dependent people of Piafra, now if I never in the air, but" "to be dependent of Nigeria."
Now, if I never in the air, but to be independent of Nigeria. So the guy was here, asking what I know. He was saying, yes, he answered me, I hope because you know that IPOB was prescribed. I said, "Hmm, now you are talking." And he said so many things. So at the end, I said, "I hope you don't mind if I ask you one or two questions." He said, "No problem." Said, "Very good." Number one, I know your first name, I know your last name. Do you have a middle name? He said, "Yes." A very chima. Actually, he said he has two. One from the father, one from the grandmother. And I said, "Very good." And he loved the names given to you by your parents. He said, "Yes, me too, I do." I said, "Now your parents are no more there." And the number one enemy of your family comes and tells to you, forget about their parents, forget about chima. I want to give you a new name. That henceforth, your name will be Anekreja. I said, "Would you answer it?" This is your number one enemy, who doesn't want you to leave. And his name, he changes his name, given to you by your parents, and calling you Anekreja. Would you answer it? He said, "No." Said, "Very good." Why would my enemy, the full and inferior government, tell me that I'm a terrorist and I will accept it? Why should I do it? If you accept it and give it to you by your enemy, then you have given your enemy the moral authority to control you. And I told him, that when your enemy says you are a terrorist, you should turn around and tell him, "He is a devil's secret agent." Give him a more serious name. That's how, that's how you count on time. Such an idiotic, uh, 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 semantics. I said, "But aside from it." I said, "Do you know why IPOB was prescribed by the federal government?" Said, "He doesn't know." Said, "Okay, well, you are discussing now." IPOB was prescribed. Let us pay attention. Not because of these young guys who are protesting on the streets of Biyafra land. IPOB was prescribed precisely to get a prominent people of Biyafra. As simple as ABC, because that is a system of Flanies. What DSS will just knock at your door. Sir, this is your ID from DSS. What did I do? When we get to the office, you will tell you. And then you go to the office, they tell you you are sponsoring a terrorist organization. And they can fabricate anything. And before you know it, they do a well with you, you are gone. And they will continue like that until they pick all the prominent people in Biyafra land. Then they have something left. It's not because of the young people on the streets. I told him, "Look, I studied social justice and peace at Fordham University here in New York, up to PhD level. So I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of genocide. I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of ethnic cleansing. I perfectly understand the signs and symptoms of religious cleansing. I know that these guys are making a terrible move to finish us." Then I told him, "You are here in US, you are very successful. You may think, okay, when they are getting the prominent people in, 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 in Biyafra land, you may feel, I'm fine and comfortable here." And see, what happens if when they finish with the prominent people in there in Biyafra land, and they change the name of Nigeria to Federal Islamic Southern of Nigeria. And they change the name and change their passport. And then when you go to Nigeria, get a new passport, they tell you, if you don't answer a Muslim name, you are not getting a passport. I said, "What do you do while you are abroad? So you no more come home. You no more go home." We need to understand the signs and symptoms of these things when they are coming. But our parents will tell us. The Flanies have given us all the signs and symptoms of where they are coming from, where they are, and where they are going. And we have refused that they had to have. Despite the fact that they got sent men, Mazinamdekanu, who saw this long time ago, with the symptoms you are coming. He was hammering what? And many of us felt that we are insulated from the problem because we are thousands and thousands of miles away from home and to be less. I told the guy again, another reason why I joined IPOB is this. When the three most important institutions in my life are under threat, I have no option but to fight like there is no tomorrow. My family is under threat. They gave me life. My community, which is Biyafra land, is under threat. Biyafra gave me identity. Our people say. My kingdom, my family, my community gave me identity. And then as an idol, I have committed my life to serve the church. Even the church is under threat. I said, "Why would you, why, how, how comfortable I, the IP, sitting back? The three most important institutions in my life, my family, my community, my church, are under threat of extinction. And you expect me to sit back and be saying the rosary alone? You must be, I didn't tell him this, but I said, it is difficult for me to accept that this is time for me to fight, if not fighting, to defend these institutions." And finally, I told him, why I joined IPOB is that after the five hundreds in 2017, we all came to New York to march. And I counted seventeen priests who came that day. Three of my friends drove from Toronto, Canada. They came for that marching and after that they went back the same day. They just came for the march. After the five hundreds, I told him, "My friend, I was getting depressed. I was hearing of depression, I never expressed it until that time. Because I was like, this is an area I studied. And look at what is happening to my people. What can we do? What can I do? I had no idea what to do. I called up my friend, they found, yes, sir. I said, "Tell, get me, connect me to the War Divorce Congress. I want to know what they are doing. Because this thing cannot continue like this." Through, uh, Dr. Kendi, when we were able to reach out to War Divorce Congress, the executives to have a meeting was difficult. My friend was willing to pay for the executives because they live all over the place to come so that we have a meeting and figure out what to do. It wasn't possible. And I was asking around, what can be done? Until I met a friend of mine who introduced me to Mazinamdekanu's speeches. After listening to him, my mind started to come in. I was already, I was already gone. And then eventually, through my friend, Simeon Egan Young, I got wind of IPOB in New York. I told him, "I am going to New York to register. I'll be coming from New Jersey to New York to join IPOB." And then after we did this a couple of months, we said, "You know what? We are going to have our own New Jersey IPOB." My dear brothers and sisters, say, "Sister, let me tell you this. You have to, you have to. Nobody deceives him or herself. If you are not aware of what is happening back to, back home now, you must be out of the mind." Let me tell you this. Since I joined IPOB, my mind relaxed. Why? Because, you know, there is nothing as bad as you go to the hospital, they run all the tests. Nobody knows what you are suffering from. Nobody knows what have to help you. You are helpless and hopeless. But once you get somebody who tells you there could be a way out, what happens? Healing starts from that moment. I started getting my spiritual, moral, and, and physical healing the moment I joined IPOB. Because I started getting this sense, I started getting this sense that there the hope is not lost. That there is always a safe line at the end of the tunnel. And so, my dear brothers and sisters, I'm not advising you to join IPOB. I am comfortable that I love it. I don't know about you. But guess what? If you are gathering all the junks that are in the social media, from Facebook, from Instagram, all this is, the vote is pounding on your head. The more you gather all these things, the more you get confused. But when you get to IPOB, IPOB will begin to sort things out, give you the clarity of how, where we are going, the hope that is there and the hope that is not there. It is helping me and since then, I have been a happy man. And nobody, I repeat, nobody can stand on my word in doing whatever it takes to be a member of IPOB. Yes, that was good. That was very, very good. That was wonderful. That's, that's the way most of us felt our way. Yes, so I was unfortunate that we, I wouldn't say we joined the IPOB early enough, no. At first, my same brother was always bothering me, listen to this man. I said, "I've heard all that from Ozzy. I don't want to bother." He said, "Brother, please, please, I know you, just listen." And I started listening, you know, it's like I got addicted. Every day I would listen, every day I would listen. But I never thought about joining IPOB. I was only listening to Mazie. I had a free listening. Until they, I didn't hear his voice and I asked my brother, "What happened there? The, the Mazie Kanu is not talking today." He said, "No, sometimes he allows you to before to do the talking." I said, "Okay." And I kept listening, then Otewa Fannaus. That our leader had been arrested. He said, "Who? Arrested? Yeah, the DSS arrested him in Nigeria." I called my brother and said, "I want to join IPOB." Because this is the time. Now, if they arrested him, it means somebody is listening to him. He's not just rabbo, rabbo, he's angry, and he's talking. So we got him. So that meant it's a serious thing, so I have to join. That's how I became a member of IPOB. And we met there forever, no matter what they do, I said. All right, we have to call up my brother, another brother of mine here, Evans. I hope for us to come up here to board him, please. Evans, are you there? Yes, he has to speak to us, talk to us about Council of Ed and Veterans. Yes, give him time to speak before I would hand the microphone over to our leader to, to do some talking for us. I know another ones are waiting. We are ready to ask questions. Write it down because when you get there, you will forget. All right.
IPOB. IPOB. One family. Me Jokere. The leg, eh? Onyendu. Yenkuu hi, teme. And I can actually still, where you are. Um, I say, Onyendu, you know, but I will mark. They change, they change. On behalf of the veterans, who they are on behalf of. And that they are on, and they didn't do. I should make a letter. Want to cover the flag to continue the struggle. And on behalf of the straight council of elders, IPOB, the NDEU, who, because of my government and Nigeria, never represented there, um, United States and Europe, I should make a letter. They are ma. Oyishifara, ni kunyendu. And it's great, but why now, so I will have a line over run. Onyendu, he changed it. Oh, because of when they were here. Now, you should walk on. Oh, I will give it, tum, tum, tum. What all is she now, oh, when they, I could wish. Who it will. Oh, no luck, won, I worry, she, you, you, because of them, they are losing their lives. The IPOB, oh, you, I will go on. Because. Onyawa. The one. If like it, the one. He made it. I'm a galapa asthma, you're a good, you're a man, eh? Biyafra. Because, I have shared with. You share, you can, pardon, IPOB. It believe that now, now. Pro Biyafra's, pro Biyafra groups, we are all saying the same thing. And I am, Onyendu, go, go, and then you know, run over. Yeah, what? Mazinamdekanu. Because Onyawa will be old and perform and do their duties. So on behalf, on behalf of Biyafra veterans, now I speak out to elders, people, thank you very much.
Thank you, my brother, and Deo. Thank you very much. All right, we'll see you moving on. This time I have to call the, the New Jersey coordinator, New Jersey, please. You wanted over here five minutes, come and speak on behalf of your people before we continue. The same presentation that they wish to do, so over to you.
IPOB. IPOB. One family. Um, as Reverend Father said before, that we all was, you know, doing a meeting with New York. And we keep on asking New York, what is going on in New Jersey? They can't tell us that they don't know what's going on. We said, "Okay, we are gonna find what is going on in New Jersey because we are from there." So as long goes on, then Reverend Father and Mazie Simeon I, where we, we chartered those places, let us set up a family, a family in New, in New Jersey. Alongline, I couldn't believe it that people in New Jersey, they were eager, you know, looking for IPOB family. So, um, as time goes on, we began to pass our information concerning IPOB to few people. I couldn't believe it that the people start calling us, "Where are you people? Where do you do your meeting? What's going on? What is time, this and that?" So this is how IPOB New Jersey starts today. And they are working day and night to make sure that they meet up the IPOB demands. And they keep on saying that when they finish what they are planning and what their movement, that the United States IPOB will know that something new from New Jersey. Right now, um, some of them were saying, "Why not Onyendu come to New Jersey?" We said, "Don't worry, we have to take permit from Onyendu." Okay, so maybe we are late, but I hope, uh, it's not the people that first run and they might not be the one to be. So. So we started at least three to four of us right now, but I believe, I'm telling you, we are the, we are doing great. Um, Oyendu, sir. Um, on behalf of the family, IPOB New Jersey, we have, uh, a symbol that we want to present to you. Uh, we want to show it as appreciation for you to come into visit us here in the state of America. And we are glad because your coming here is close for us.
Yes.
Uh, please, all IPOB, please, you stand up, please. Any, every, any, behalf of from New Jersey, have to stand up. On behalf of from New Jersey, you have to stand up. If you know that they're coming from New Jersey, please stand up. Oyendu, sir. We, the family of New Jersey IPOB, we, we are giving this symbol for your great job and great work for behalf friends. We say, may God, Chukwuka, Biamma, bless you and lead you and bless your family. He say.
IPOB. When I was coming here, I had the impression that I was coming to see only our people in New York. But as I came here, the added bonus of New Jersey has uplifted my spirit and my soul. And I am overjoyed, overjoyed. And the same way that this very spirit moved around some of you in New Jersey, so do I pray that it will move across the 50 states here in the United States of America. Only two things are holding us. I think we've solved the first one. Our mothers are now coming out. The next one is that this gospel of redemption must permeate every society, every community where our people are domiciled in this great country. Because Chukwuka, Biamma will give us behalf. That those of you in USA will lead us to it. That is your responsibility. Thank you very much, once again, New Jersey, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Amadike. All right, all right, New Jersey. New Jersey. Ah, ha. As now, one, one, two, one, two, detail, or can, Naya? Yes, all the motor, it's very good. I'm very impressed. I'm very, very impressed. Okay, this time, our, we have to, I know many of us here, so we got to hear Oyendu say something. Just me too, I brought us also, no one. Radio here, recording everything, so we have to play, uh, you know, recorded program from radio, Biafra USA 2. We are here hosting our leader today. So, uh, right now, I have to present the microphone to our leader for the gospel of the day. Marzi, your time. Thank you very much, thank you. IPOB. 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 One family. One family. One family. Deo. Please sit back on. Before I proceed, as it is customary within IPOB, when you work for IPOB, you are working for heaven itself. They live, they are, they are, see. Because we are here doing the will of Elohim, the will of God, the creator of the heavens and the earth. That is why we see things that ordinary people cannot see. That is why we say things for five years before they happen. That is why anything we say comes to pass. I want to acknowledge two people here. Is Mama Africa here somewhere? Please come, come to me here. Come here. Come, come to me. Come to me. And our dear brother, Chai, answer, is he here? Chai, where are you? Great woman, yes. Great woman, yes. I, this is one of us touched by the spirit. And I'm humbled to actually be in her presence today because she's a very strong lady. You must commend her for what she's doing because she is one of us. And in IPOB, there are behalf friends. In IPOB, there are detectors. But when we say that somebody is one of us, it means that they are faultless. It means they are resolute. It means that their spirit is indestructible. It means I only have one vision, that vision is to restore Biafra and nothing else. That is why I commend her to all of you. May God bless you. May God, may God bless you. May God bless you. Thank you very much, thank you. As we continue to wait, I want to acknowledge Chai, of course. And then we must proceed to preach this very gospel as I have been mandated in spirit to do. I am here to cure many diseases. All the name, Nenaya, and the Bani, and you who, eh, Polo, the person. Excuse me. I will cure all of that today. You know, things have changed when Reverend Father will come out to say that even himself was born again to join IPOB. Normally, I wouldn't start this way, I will preach. But I will go to start from the back to begin to lay a very credible foundation as to all the unfounded allegations and inundio against this very great family, the greatest of its kind, and we are on the face of the earth. We are the largest mass movement in the whole world by and of none, only IPOB. Somebody had something, I am sure some of you invited some people and they gave you excuses out of fear and cowardice. What they are saying has no justification, but what they want to do is that, which they will continue to do, is to allow their prejudice to overcome them. Because what you have accomplished, what IPOB New York has done, what IPOB New Jersey has done, what IPOB USA is doing, is something that they themselves can never do. Not today, not tomorrow, not ever. And because of that, because they cannot do it, they had to look for a way to try, to discourage others from joining, to try and destroy it, but they cannot because this is a divine project. Before I came here, I asked our sister, Nenaya, I am still on the defense fund. Defense fund, I'm still on it. Maybe in a demban, a son, a ban, you also, I had you, you are, do, eh, now, come, oh, come, enjoy, it's in a microwave, warm, white. How many of you here paid defense fund? I want the camera to capture it, please. How many people here paid the defense fund? This, you can list, you will, you tell, eh, you, you, somebody. I have the list here. To be, I have the list. Because, I'm gonna stand back, I have the list with me. Before you raise your hand up. These are those that paid for defense fund in America. I asked the Nenaya before I came here, I don't refer to my people when I'm preaching, but I have to today because it is an exception and it was sent to me. In the whole world, 50 countries out of the 88 where we are domiciled responded. And in total, the amount we contributed towards our defense fund is 100 and 58,406 euros and 47 pence. What do you call pence in Euro, is it cent? It is here, from our computer printed, I said 100 and only. This is not up to the amount we use to chase a whiffful amaze from a man. Those billions and billions have been lying to you about trying to distract you from serving yourselves. It is here. And how much did USA pay? Somebody here should know. How much did USA pay towards our defense fund?
2,000 something.
2,778. But the greatest gossipers are in America. The greatest peddlers of lies and deceit that are here, here in America. The same way the life of our brother Scott Berry lied to him about me, somebody who was in prison. You know, when you lie and lie against somebody who is in prison for your sake, God will never forgive you. All that defense fund, do not forget, those that did not pay for defense fund that does, tell me about it. Today, you have compared me to tell Fana, that you have no money. Now they know. You can now see it. 2,778, all of USA, and then what, Masara Defense Fund. And you know the funniest thing? With the exception of, who, 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 the defense fund, the one?
Yeah, we did.
Who, who, on the, on the, on the?
We did. Hey, we did.
Give, give me that phone again. The, all, the, the, policy, the, the, don't, don't, fail, man. I have no secret, if you know me. I tell you the truth always. That is why I'm alive. Chukwaka, Biamma said, if you speak the truth always, I will preserve you. That is why I read the longer Psalm in the Bible, Psalm 119, every night. I have been reading it consistently for five years without fail. As long as you remain truthful, there is no plan from the enemy that will prevail against you. I have come to New York, I went to Atlanta, I went to Los Angeles, so. I traveled to Houston, I went to Chicago. In between, I went to Toronto and Canada, and I'm in New York. Why don't you ask yourselves, where are those gossipers, Kevin, eh? Where are they? They have come up with a new one. The new one is that IPOB was prescribed, uh, that we are a terrorist group. As our Reverend said, somebody told him that they are prescribed. And they said these people are educated, that in America, they enlightened. And yet, some people cannot reason properly. They full of need that declared IPOB a terrorist group. Why haven't they declared, full of need, Hesman, a terrorist group? Do you know that Boko Haram has not been designated a terrorist group, I hear about that? Do you know? But IPOB was designated a terrorist group because they know that some of you are cowards. You think they're not easy? Britain is the one advising them. Britain knows that a majority of our people in America are cowards. Once you say, no, the candidate terrorist, there will, no one can support him. Because they'll be afraid, if they travel home, they'll be arrested. Who told you that? But they are not gonna be arrested if you travel because they in IPOB. Who told you that? Because they know that you are fearful. We say that Europeans are cowards, that we are the greater cowards. We hide behind every reason not to support a great movement like this. Every reason in the world we manufacture. Every excuse we manufacture to support. Now they are called terrorists. But the full amaze are killing you every blessed day. As the Reverend said, the church is under attack. Some of you go to churches. Don't you? You go to different churches, man, can be your back. Who, they tell you, eh, my church, Masra, eh? They, eh, 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 eh. Eh, my, you, eh, eh. One for Biafra, eh, Gavach, eh, 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 shame on you. You're, eh, eh, eh. Anybody that goes to a Europe church, you will be ashamed of himself or herself. I didn't say you shouldn't marry them all, open him to the back. I said their church, and do you know why? Do you know why you shouldn't go to their churches? Because they will all follow Muslims, all of them. I said all of them. Do you mean a fuck of them? Every known European preacher was born a Muslim. But they use their media preponderance, their excessive representation within Nigerian media space to convince you. The same way they convinced you now, that talking about rape is more important than talking about full amaze coming to your villages to kill you. They manipulate your brains. They make you think that miracle is only possible in Yoroban churches. And then you go there. And what do you come with? Is everything okay? Because we are their friends and we are always well behaved. Is anybody here not aware that full armies are in our villages? Who here doesn't know? Is there anybody here who does not know that full armies are in our villages? And who do you expect to fight them? You will get a small hug from America. Can you fight them from New Jersey? Can you fight them from New York? Can you fight them from Chicago? Who are the people on the ground fighting full army today in Biafra land? Anybody that gossips to you from today on was asked a simple question, "Why were you not at the town hall meeting to ask this ridiculous question now?" Some people don't appreciate the level of sacrifice that needs to go into any freedom fighting movement before liberty can be assured. Some of you are in America, but you don't know American history. This land you are seeing today flowing with milk and honey, people fought for it. And do you know why Elohim said to Moshe, that is Moses by anywhere, "I have given you this land for free, but you must fight for it." Do you know why? So that the children of God will not be people of superstition. Because if you go into the land for free, anytime you ask for something else, you think you come for free. Isn't it? That is the basis for superstition. The which has no place in the life of a true believer. I don't believe in superstition. I believe in reality. That thing that we can do for ourselves. And I say it with every degree of authority. As I say everywhere that I go to. And without IPOB, without IPOB, the full army will not go for full army. There will take you, there is nothing you can do about it. And our land will be gone. And who do you think will save you? Would the army say save you? Would they save you? People say, "Oh, they're intelligent. Igbo's are very intelligent." Our dear friends are very intelligent people. Two fundamental mistakes we have done in our time. Maybe that is why God is angry with us. If you know you cannot do what IPOB is doing, if you know you cannot do what Nam de Kama is doing, stay by the side and appreciate them. Don't allow your envy and your puny, you know, to override your sense of reasoning. Some people get up in the morning, they see how well IPOB is doing, in the evening they form an association. They do this, and they tell you, "Oh, come, let's unite." Let's unite with who? What have you done before? Can you come to New York and go for a town hall meeting and the hall will be filled like this? Why don't you come and join us? Why must you be outside, seeking for relevance? Asking us to come and, uh, get where, so around the book, four corner table, I don't know what they call it. Because inside us, we harbor the deadly seeds of jealousy, envy. And it is very, very destructive. That is why Igbo men or army's, their turn of language, can sit down there and allow IPOB that is not carrying any weapon to be prescribed. We are there as full army hate men that are killing us, can turn into our land, and we are now negotiating with them, which portion of land to give to them. Do you understand what I'm saying? Are you aware that full armies are killing people? Are you aware that Christians are dying and they are being killed? Are you aware that Jews are dying and being killed? Are you aware of it? Have you heard of anywhere that IPOB went to start a committee to kill the people there? But Igbo men, Igbo men, the Igbo, sat down and decided that it is better for their political careers for IPOB to be prescribed, for Nam de Kama to be killed. Do you know why I say this thing wherever I go to? Because we will not forgive them. And I'm saying it now, if you are going to cry for them, start crying from today. We will not forgive them. They will pay very dearly for their betrayal of our people. Everything I have told you has come to pass. Every, you know that Chukwabia is marvelous. I am telling you the truth. If God doesn't love IPOB and what we are doing, how come everything we say in exact precision happens exactly like that? I told Nigerian Bar Association, that was in JN, I said to them, "I have been given two unconditional releases from the court." And you people refused to put pressure on the government, using your good offices to compel them to release me from prison. That one day, this government will come after you. Go and ask them. A maparafa will sign the pre statement that was, it was published, go and Google it. Everything I tell you, you can Google it as if it is true or false. And I said to him, "If you fail to compel the courts to prevail on that on the general of the Federation to order my release, given to outstanding court judgments, that you will suffer for it." Ask him, and he was removed. As he just, this grace of office was removed. This grace of office. The same thing I told Ogorocha and his friends. That shame shall befall them. And you know how they play their politics in the zoo? He contested for senate, isn't it? And he rigged himself into powers that nobody do. And they will tell his certificate. And they raised this top for him, doing it like this. Do you want it? He will say, "Yes, yes, I want it." They said to him, "Go and denounce Igbo presidency, twenty twenty-three will give it to you." And he did, gladly agreed. But you have been reduced to begging for what should rightfully belong to you. And there was a statement they issued today again. Do you know what they said? In fact, if you're Nigerian, raise your hand up here, please. Do you know what they said today in the zoo? Do you know the depressing arrogance of full army cattle heads? The big, the worst is that if you go to school, they are migrants into the zoo, God Nigeria. They are not even indigenous to the place. And they have gone across the lake and break of northern part of the zoo. They have opened to their progress for their fellow full armies to come from Mali to kill you in your towns and in your villages, that your land may be taken over. That we will, what I'm saying, go and ask the Togolese president, he said it yesterday. Togolese president said it yesterday. And this morning, full army people said openly, "No Christian can ever become the president of Nigeria." Oh, why is it open? Is it Vanguard, is it Vanguard or Punch today? And some of you say you're Nigerians, "Oh, we won't support IPOB." That America will not save you. Because you would have no way to go to. And let me tell you something about white people and how they reason. Once they know you have no way to go to your nearest home. Do you know that? Jews were killed in Europe, even during the Spanish invasion, right up to the very awful above Hitler. They were killed because they felt that European Jews had no way to go. The same thing shall be for you. And to my pastors have been praying over this and saying, "Chukwabia, do you want to destroy us?" Because people going through what we are going through today and have consistently refused to reason, there must be, that is destruction, isn't it? You are an endangered species. I am telling you the truth. No amount of offer you dance outside can save you. No amount of village meeting you hold outside can save you. No amount of award abroad can save you. The only way you can sustain your relevance is by making sure that the land you come from is liberated and free. Some people think that Yorobas will fight, is that correct? Will Yoroba fight? Yoroba no? And do you know why they will not fight? Their reason is twofold. And let me tell you the truth today. Everybody in that devil's creation, called Nigeria, when they talk about one Nigeria, keeping Nigeria one is for a reason. They know that without their friends, this thing that full armies are doing is like picnic. They will stop all of them. All of them will go. So we are their insurance. We are their insurance in that zoo, called Nigeria. Us. Yoroba would not want Nigeria to divide because if Biafra goes, full army will come and live in Lagos and take, how many army of Lagos now? Yes, now. That's army of Lagos. Can they talk? Because half of Yoroba is Muslim, understand this very well. And as every Muslim knows, your allegiance is to Saudi Arabia and Iran. And if you are in the zoo and you are from Yoroba land and you're a Muslim, your primary allegiance lies with the Sultanate in Sokoto. Do you know that the Sultan is the head of Muslims in the zoo? Do you know that? Do you know that no Yoroba man can go and hold Jumateas on Friday in the north? No Yoroba a man can walk into a mosque in the north of the zoo and conduct prayers. Impossible. But they are confidently remaining as slaves to the full army because of their fear of an Igbo man. Maybe because we are blessed. I said to the world that the Jews of Europe went through the same thing. God in his infinite mercy will keep on blessing Biafrans. You know Chukwabia can be angry with us as much as he likes, but because his word is here and amen, once he has given you a blessing, he cannot take it back. Are you following me? Once you are under the special mountain of heaven as we Biafrans are, it can never be taken back. That we shall continue to suffer until we discover who we are and remedy some of the nonsense that the creation of Nigeria has brought us into. Who created Nigeria? Who created the zoo? Is Luka from Allo? Is Luka from Zafara? Is Luka from Obomoshu? Now can you tell me the reason why Africans are defending something that they did not feel? When they call you a slave, you shouldn't blame them, they are right. Oh, my can I ban, somebody will have free, but I won't say it because kids are here. It's for adults only. Can you tell me the reason why you are allowed people to come from Europe into your land to tell the men to answer? Can you expect that to be pleased? Is India developed? Is India developed? Is Japan developed? Is Singapore developed? Is Malaysia developed? How about the common Philippines, is it developed? Do you know one thing they have in common? They are proud of their heritage. They are proud of who they are. Because some people see us the way we are, with our Kiba and our Talita, they say they are taking us to Israel that we are not Jews. And what I'm saying to you today was exactly what I said to the students of Tel Aviv University when I gave the lecture there last year, November, if I'm not mistaken. And I said to them that the only place on this earth, the only place in the whole world that lends pretense to the assertion that the Jews were in Egypt, is only in Biafra land. I repeat, the only place, where there is verifiable proof and evidence that Biafrans, or should I say that Jews were in Egypt, is only in Biafra land. And they asked me why. I said, "Because the same two of pyramids you have in Egypt, you have in Enugu State." Some of you don't know what a pyramid is. You know pyramid? In Egypt? Do you know the level of scientific knowledge that has to go into the construction of one pyramid? The exact measurements that accompanies it, are you aware of it? Those things are where you come from. It is not in Israel, not in Ethiopia, not in Eritrea, but in Biafra land. but in Biafra land. Some of you have forgotten that we have a temple in Arochubu. They talk to you, they lie to you, they say it's in the Nabi. As the one man told you or asked you to believe, our temple was there to worship one through God in heaven. That's why it's called Arochubu. Chi te bili, owele Arochubu? Huh? There are other lesser Jesus, is that correct? The way Chubu? Is that true of us? Chi te kasa ti chini, is that not correct? The way of Arochubu, is that correct? I hope you're not going to Yoruba church. We are the original children of heaven. That is why we are all blessed. That is why you can come to America and become, without missing words, the most advanced ethnic group here in America. Is that true of us? So you think you did it out of your own sheer strength? Because God is with you. Wherever you go, is that not what they says in the scriptures? I will bless you, is that not correct? But let us not turn our blessing into stupidity. That is why you must rise up to support IPOB. That is why you must do everything within your powers to ensure that Biafra comes. Because without Biafra, you are nothing. The same way it happened to the Jews of Europe, so shall it be with you if you don't do something now to arrest this very ugly situation. Because the Fulanis have come. Do you think Romaji will defend you? Does Romaji, will he defend you? Will Okazipas to defend you? Will Okambo defend you? Who can defend you? Who can defend you?
IPOB.
Who can defend you?
IPOB.
The only reason why they came to kill me was because Zibo men were behind it. Without the support of all these men, their roots are buried. Do you think those people that died don't have mothers and fathers and sisters and brothers like yourselves or children? They are not all young people. There were old people amongst those that fell. That is why we will not forgive nor forget. There will be retribution. If you represent the interest of all these corrupt criminals, tell them what I said in New York, that there will be... There are elders here. How many of you here ask the governors why they sent people to come and kill us? How many of you here? Only one person at the back. Why can't you ask these people why they decided to come and kill us? Those who are fighting for you, for your survival as a race. Fulani have told you, you cannot produce a president. They did not find you fit to occupy any specific position in the zoo. They have come for your land, that's why, by force. And all the money that fuels the economy of that damnable zoological republic comes from Biafra land. What else are you looking for? To convince you that you're not a Nigerian? Is there anything special you're looking for? Or are you waiting for PwP to be confirmed as vice president? What are you waiting for? I have a feeling and a suspicion that some of you in America wants our race to distinct. I'm telling you the truth. My feeling tells me that some of you here in America, you hate yourself so much that you want the race of Biafra to be obliterated from the face of the earth. Do you think the Fulanis will stop coming? Do you think they'll stop coming one day? They'll stop coming, do you think so? What are we going to do to stop them? What are we going to do to stop them?
Defend our land!
Are we going to fight them? Are we going to fight them? Are we going to fight them? Are you prepared to do all it takes? Are you prepared to do what it takes? There are two things you have to do. And one, I have given you a very long date, our calendar. Have you secured, have you secured, I hope it's from the 3rd of July to March in Washington? Have we secured it? Have we applied? Is there any reason why all of you cannot come to Washington? July the 3rd, 2020? Any reason? Is anybody here who's unemployed? And there are people here who are unemployed now, like on America. I bring up college work. Can you take time off work? Can you take holiday, one day if there's a work? Are you sure? Can you take two days off work? After one week time? In America?
Yes.
But so you do four, five, six jobs. So if you take holiday on number one job, how about number two and number three? So we can take two days off, yes?
Hundred percent.
Starting from today, because the whole world is listening to this very broadcast program at one, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
The whole world is listening and will be coming from all over the world to America. The rights you enjoy today in America can be distilled down to only one episode in the history of this country. That very march on Capitol Hill led by the very gallant and late Booker Martin Luther King Jr. That is why you have jobs in America. That one single march. And without an unsingle march, which we know will surpass that very march, not only will Biafra be free, but the whole of Africa will be free actually. I don't know what Washington will look like that very day. But I know that there are some of you that will write to US government and ask them not to allow us to come in on the 3rd of July. Before I came here, some of you were receiving WhatsApp messages and emails, is that correct? Since I've come, are you still receiving those messages? We are prepared to do everything humanly possible to restore Biafra. We have sacrificed in the past, we shall continue to sacrifice until Biafra is restored. And we are not rich. Everything I am wearing here, including these glasses, was given to me by IPOB family members. The reason why I said this, that once you may have need for money, I don't. I have no need for a car. I have no need for a bicycle. I have no need for a mansion. Because the greatest mansion each of us are concerned is the presence of Biafra. I have no savings. I have no savings. I have only one bank account with Lloyd CSD in England. God has them. Because my covenant is with God in heaven. Any day I abandon Biafra, any day I dream of abandoning Biafra, if God does not wipe me out of my family, I know he is not God. I say, "Tell light to God in heaven." Thank you. Thank you. And having said that, I thank those who organized this. The New York and New Jersey, USA IPOB, this great family. I am a Christian. The man that called us that name is today a greater Christian than we are. They disguise what we have been telling them year after year, after year, after year, that the Fulanis will come, they will take your land, they will destroy you. Nobody bothered to listen. They said, "I'm looking for trouble", that I want to start a war. So hate speech. War against hate speech. By Usipandja and Membah very clearly. They call it hate speech. That when Fulanis are killing you, it is called love killing. When they destroy your farm produce and render asunder your means of livelihood, it is a love war, you know, fam.
Treat them with love.
Do you want to remain in Nigeria? I am asking the people here in New York City, do you want to remain in Nigeria? Because what I will tell you, all against me, and is a way we can do it. And I have. Because some of you love lies. I will know who are saying, asking. Understand it very well. I hate lies and liars. If I come to US to see IPOB family, I will tell you in the open that every other substantive meeting that I have with those that matter, that can move our cause forward, I will not tell you, Bob. For every picture that you see us pay and do it, there are 30 more that we cannot do it. I will talk about it. Anybody who brings lies and deception into Biafra liberation, lies will cost you all the days of your life. Nobody have a covenant with heaven. Nobody from anywhere else did, apart from us in IPOB. We've been accused of everything now in this Barosin that we are under oath. If you are not under oath, I cannot help you. Do you understand me? If you are not under oath, I will not fuck with you. I am making it very, very clear. Because you will sell us for 52 years, non-stop. They have been selling us every place they did till now. And you want me to walk with you? That is this question I ask all the time. How many Igbo associations are successful in the whole world? Can you apply also? How many Igbo groups are successful, thank my king Membah? How many? Is that not correct?
You got the graduation.
Somebody said, "We are family political journey IPOB because we don't know what will happen to us when we die." I said, "Do you know you're talking about IPOB?" The person said yes to me. And I said to them, or to him in particular, "What you should worry yourself about is will your entire town contain us when we come?" Can that contain us when we come? Have you seen IPOB march before the road? Back home? I don't think so. When we march, the mountains vibrate. When those people march towards the north, I give you 14 days that this zoo will not exist, I assure you. Some of you in America have the same attitude. I preached this, I think it was in Chicago, that best slavery possible. That slavery was made a reality in the life of men is because of your attitude. This same attitude some of you are portraying. And that is why I have preached it before. But it appears that when the whites say that they are superior, that they are correct. Do you, who had the Christian video game? When white people say they are superior to blacks, I believe them, that they are. Do you know why? They don't resist the way we do. They don't. When this country was under attack by the same Britain, they defied Britain or not? Do you know that those that fought Britain were British people? That came here to live a life of equal peace and equality amongst men? They fought. We are not even asking you to fight. We are not even asking you for your money. We are asking you for something that will not cost you anything, simple moral support you cannot give. What about personally? Am I expecting you to go back home to go and fight? Some of you think that one day you rise up and you go home and your village will still be there. Who told you that ever in America? They are in a hurry. They need to, now, listen to me carefully, they need to round up very, very quickly, they have three and a half years to complete it. After that, they will hand over to us. By that time, Fulanis and your villages, they will say, "Oh, why are you complaining? But IPOB, your brother is the vice president now, so why are you complaining?" Are you following me? The day it happens, so the government will give you a new job. What I'm telling you is what is going to happen before it happens. Are you going to allow your place to take enough from you? Will you allow it? Who are those that fought? She deserves the service, or maybe you join later. Just raise your hand up, don't stand up. Just raise your hand up. Do you know that you are alive today because of them? Do you know that? How many don't know? Because of the war they fought, that is why you are alive. I will tell you their plan. Do you see what is happening in the little bit now? How they slaughter entire communities, have you seen it? That was their plan, to kill everybody up until the age of 10. Then they now groom them to become good Muslims. You don't know that? These men, some of them are our fathers, fought and fought and fought and fought until Gomor accepted the terms of no victory or vengeance. You must understand this. So whenever you see a veteran, they are your savior that you'll see that same moment. And I call them the greatest army the world has ever seen. Because if you can fight Britain, Russia, Egypt, O A U, and they look wrong attitude, or should I say, collaboration, conspiracy, I use the word, of USA, then you deserve every accolade that you get, I assure you. Nobody was able to do what we have done for three whole years, to fight against the whole world and the prejudice. Sadly, those things that our parents fought and died for, some of you are carrying to bed. Why do you think we did not receive any help during the war? Bulgaria told Chief Justice Tchikemokhedi to his face that one Japan is enough, they don't want another one. Who he unknown, the late Justice Tchikemokhedi of the Supreme Court. He was our special envoy to become his countries a means to farthest of Europe. He went to look for help. Do you know what that thing taught me, the way the day he told me this in M F in London? I asked him, which of course he concurred later, that some of the hatred you see against Biafra is not because of anything we may have done. They are afraid of what we, what they know that we are likely to become. Because if Biafra we are to stand, we will build an airplane, we will build many cars, we will build skyscrapers. There is nothing a white man is do that we cannot do. Therefore, some people don't want this something to rise from Africa. But perhaps some of you are content with living the life of semi-slaves in America, but me am not. Do we know we are semi-slaves here? That you are here unfettered free slave? Are you aware of that? They came and took our ancestors, brought them here for 200 years of free labor. And after that, you will tear yourself to continue where they left off. Very shameful and disgraceful. That is why in IPOB, we have honor and we have commitment. That is why we know that our worth can only be measured, not only by the restoration of Biafra, but how well we go on to build Biafra. Biafra will not be like any other indigenous African country, I assure you. Can anybody tell me what the Fulanis contribute to Nigeria?
Terrorism.
Do you know the population? Do you know the population? And they are terrorizing all of us. Instead of us to join hands together and return them and fight them, we engage in picking and fighting like people who cannot resist very well. All the Chabam and Ned, the Fulanis, we are worse than Europe, I can understand it. They are the lowest of the low, they price cattle. They sleep with their cattle, they drink the urine of their cattle. And they are your lords and your masters. And you allow such nonsense to continue, you condone such idiocy. And then you rise up and tell me, "I live in America, I'm very proud." It's a good thing for that, the fact is no one anybody. Because when I preach, there is hardly any good news in it. But the good news I'm giving you today is that Biafra must come. You have another assignment apart from Washington 2020. You are going to pay for what you are going to do at home. We want you to fund this very movement. I want America to fund IPOB. Can you do that? Today, I've told you how much you have contributed in your defense fund, and I'm sure that case is now buried completely. You are going to pay $1 every month. Yes. No, 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 $1, Gabrielle, I need it. And $1 is tax deductible, is that correct? So in actual fact, we will use the legal means of getting on concern to fund Biafra restoration.
Exactly, correct.
And those outside can't be angry, there are too many people outside. But why did we get such a place that cannot take off? You are going to the stadium. Many people are outside and they are upset. Because at last, our people understand the truth we are preaching, they understand it, and they are responding accordingly. They must not be upset. What we do about this? How many of you know this? Many of them. They are outside. They came, some of them must have come late. And beware that the door is closed tonight. Because who are outside, who said you go, you have? Beware the door is closed tonight, is how the door of Biafra will be closed, you have no body. That doesn't turn now, disappoint us. And now that I went did it, the motivation is. I will, what they say now, they say we have a serial capacity. But they, the commander of the other channel, they have prepared it. And so, I call on the police. This, I can't carry it back, my grandfather, he's a weird. Because if they call them now, and when they miss, we say that the police can't arrest me in New York. We only have one thing to do. I am asking each and every one of you here to contribute $1 tax deductible. In all the ways, you're not paying for it, on concern is, to help restore Biafra. And not once you're contributing it, you're calculating how many people there are in New Jersey. Only can you find in the justice. Too many. People are coming in, that we have no more space, so they have to stand. Because if we announce donation, donation now, ever, ever, I mean, they won't understand. We are one family, and Biafra must be restored. I said before that anybody who doesn't believe in Biafra will not go to heaven. You probably the answer they complaining. They were asking me, "Do you have the keys to heaven?" And I said, "Yes, that I do, that that heaven is Biafra." Because our Lord prayer, and he said, "As it is in heaven, so shall it be on this very earth." So if there is heaven somewhere in heaven, there will look, and it's also heaven here on this very earth. And that heaven is Biafra. Do we have any doubt? Do we have any doubt? We are going to Washington, July the 10th, 2020. Are you coming with us? Are you coming with us? From, which you said from next month, every Biafra adult in the USA must settle a direct debit, have you not yet? To contribute tax deductible $1 every present month. That's all we need from you. And then you watch this, you don't want. If you have more than that, you can also give. Leave on imagine after the young lady. So far, has IPOB done well in defending you back home? Has IPOB done well in defending you back home? Then you have no reason or excuse, not to support us. Therefore, I say to all of you here gathered today that what we are fighting for is not just self-determination. What we are fighting for is our freedom. We are fighting for the right to live as free men and free women in the land of our ancestors. The young women. Our ancestors occupied that very land for over 5,000 years. So shall we occupy it for another 5,000 years. I conclude this evening by praying, because some of you have some questions which I must answer. That Chukwudika Biaman, that started IPOB, because I did not. That the same Chukwudika Biaman that gave us DSS, that evil men destroyed. The same Chukwudika Biaman that kept us alive up until this very day will not only hear our prayers, but will give us Biafra in our lifetime. We are going to march in this country that the world may know who we are, that the world may know we live in this very country, that humanity may bear testimony to the fact that a people from Africa came here and decided to stake a claim for their freedom in the land of the free. And that any obstacle, be that man-made nor spiritual, standing in the way of Biafra, that very entity will fall. We have no need for Nigerians because we are Biafrans. And one day, Nigeria will be obliterated from the face of this very earth, never to come back anymore. Therefore, I say to you here gathered, may the spirit of the Almighty, greater of the heavens and the earth, Chukwudika Biaman, Rumi Yenin, dwell within you and upon you, preserve and keep you, that you may all be alive to witness the coming of Biafra. that you may all be alive to witness the coming of Biafra. IPOB!
One family!
IPOB!
One family!
IPOB!
One family!
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 IPOB!
One family!
IPOB!
One family!
IPOB!
One family!
Alright, um, when I go here now, I can say before, um, when we came in here, I asked somebody to give us numbers. Yeah, okay, I asked somebody to give us some numbers. And I have to bring you guys here. Big ol' look, uh, listen to this. This is supposed to be question and answer time. And for them, they're late, well, I don't know, you see, this is why we say, what music is that? I'm being interrupted here. Alright. Next time, ask the Ogoro, I can draw my own company. You are late, you are late, and the door locked now, which one was there? And even though we're there, I want now the zoo, we don't care, we're kind for saying. As a someone, somebody came to me today and asked me a question. He said, are you, are you part of the used to sing in the band? I said, yes. And the, and the zoo is out there, you know, that thing. When we are here, yes, we, let me, let me start by calling out and people that have a number that want to speak, ask questions. While we are, so please, if you want to ask a question, you have to make it very, very brief. No praises, nothing, just come here, ask your question. If it is the one who's going to answer immediately, he will. But if it's the one that requires you to, because a lot of people are going to come and ask the same thing over and over. So, uh, those that were given numbers, I don't know, do you have somebody who has the number one that wants to ask a question? What's your number? Number one? Alright, copy. Straight to the question, no talking, just two minutes. I have Biafra.
I have Biafra.
I have Biafra.
I have Biafra.
My director, I want to welcome you to me. Now welcome. And God of heaven, who sent you to us. Shout. United States. And we pray before we do anything. Thank God for all of you who came. I hope you come and join us in the meeting. Not to come and take picture with the director. Good morning. My question, sir. Is it possible that you have inner circle where those of us who are not coordinators will be able to share? Okay. Alright, another thing is, let me be very clear this time. We want question because like as I'm here now, I've had someone that I'm a member of IPOB, so it's very, very, uh, very unselfish of us to try to bring IPOB members to ask questions. We want strangers, people who are not members of IPOB that need to ask questions. Okay, let me, I can see a hand up there. Are you, you are, are you an upper two? Are you a member of IPOB? Then we don't need you to ask questions. We want those who are not members of IPOB to ask questions. Alright? I have nothing, uh, because there's nothing, uh, we, as IPOB members who ask that we've not really heard before, or know. You want, you want to ask questions, go ahead. Well, the number does not say, I'm not, I'm not jumping numbers. What we are saying, if you are a member of IPOB already and you have a number, is you're not going to ask any question. We want those who are not members to ask this question.
What should our people do? If the, what should our people do if the devilishest men are ordered to start slaughtering people and people are home? How can we defend ourselves right now?
Alright. Okay. IPOB!
One family!
Our sister asked us a question, what are we going to do if the Florida heads there or we are there to start killing us? It's supposed to do what we've been doing. We've been fighting back. We've been driving them away. They're with us or without your support, they will overwhelm us. That is why we need to support everybody here. Now just sit up and across to the viewers. Thank you very much. Alright, um, this is number 11, who has the next number? That is not member of IPOB. You are, okay. Number seven.
Because when you shine, they go, oh, poor guy. Ah, wow, wow, chill. He can look at Javale, oh, poor guy. Uh, because if I don't come to the, come to the, come to on him, I'll sacrifice, big sacrifice, give my life. I do go, oh, oh. We go into Israel. Israel, now I'm talking. We want to give Israel, Israel, give him here and there, Akas. Nandi no, no, Kinahana, I don't go, I'm not close to you. Oh, no, guy, guy. Russia or China? Israel, they're here, Akas. Hey, we're here, Biafra, come, I can't, go on, I love. Oh, no, la, la, la. Biafra, also, oh, you go, niche in America, girl, they're in the book. He can go, you know, I got Russia. And when I'm, no, I'm, you know. After that, I want to, I got Russia.
Russia, they got the Zima, they got the Zima, lead fighters, oh, no, no, dig it, brother. Although, the unique time, because American are pretty, oh, can do, I will give my, 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 my. Alright, uh, I don't know, I can't get the question, but advance it. I think all I do, I will leave you, you just might come and use this one. Thank you. Um, your question is in order, but you also answered it as well. Because where we to start advertising, every step that we take, our enemies will take exactly those same steps to counter it. So, but I can assure you that you are the ones holding us. I'm telling you this, you people in the USA are the ones holding us, putting us back anyway. Come to Washington, July 3rd, 2020, and then ask me four weeks from then. But I can assure you, there'll be no need for any further questions. Come to Washington and then you see what will happen. Thank you. Alright, um... Alright, uh, I'm gonna break the protocol for one time because somebody here said, is, they came out of state and they want just to ask one simple question. Is a member of IPOB, but I'm not gonna lie, any more member of IPOB. Because I don't know what we in IPOB want, ask it to tell us. We've been listening to him. We are, we are, we are filled up. So those who are coming from the outside who are the members, uh, need to give them priority. Alright, my brother, uh, okay, we'll get to you later, I mean, that's all I do. One minute.
Uh, thank, thank you, manz, um, it's a privilege to be, uh, missed this evening. Many children, um, recently, North African Congress, never, I told you, not in their own quest, talking to law, talking to lawmakers and people of government here, do you intend to follow this line of strategy? Also, this is a plan to, planned in the past, like to constitute strategy in these very groups, in this problem. And also, and also, the defense fund, did you include the cost of that you said, that's where I come from? I know most of us have contributed.
Alright. Uh, thank you very much. You said, people came to meet, um, United States government, uh, who? Government? Senators? Never, I can't.
I have a call of assistance.
I have a call of, I have a call of... I don't lie. What I can't do, I will tell you, I can't do it. I can't lie in the name of Biafra. Um, I don't discuss individuals nor groups. You have my, have my mother. Mother, have me. Huh?
For mother, boy.
Massachusetts contributed. And, um, where's, where's my phone? It's a good question you asked. In the whole of West, in the whole of United States of America, only Massachusetts contributed the money that we have to receive in Germany. Only. We not hear, they not, can you hear me? Defense fund, the defense fund, the defense fund, only IPOB in Massachusetts, a few of them contributed. They rest put their money into, is it Bank of America?
Bank of America, USA.
That swallowed the money. The same people who are gossiping, we are those that collected their money.
Allah, who come monthly 12?
Are you hearing me?
They don't pay monthly 12.
The same people inboxing you gossip, that the ones that X the money, they not need to do, they are being at the wife. They paid us a thousand dollars. And some of these people here, they still have the tendency to lie and to ask about defense fund that they themselves never contributed to.
Two, both.
My dear brother, nobody came to see a senator for information. And they are not fighting for Biafra. I am not part of any constitutional amendment in the zoo. I am for Biafra and dead to the zoo, God Nigeria. Alright, we had it. Okay, uh, um, what's the problem? Are you a member of IPOB?
Never, I say one no.
Yeah, no.
I'm from all the chiro's United and from other states, who are here, who are not, who make, who are not, who are not made. So, you don't know, ah, and we're like, um, MBB is satisfied to business with the government of United States of America. So, I believe that not only IPOB is registered business in United States of America, they are just a lot of grass. My mother, I decided to, to, to get money from peace organizations for people. Now, who are that people, who never saw us, even without scholarship, oh, my, I'm deep, naturally, though, they hate me teaching.